Good evening. The June 10th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Suffolkans?
Here.
Councilmember Ravel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed? He's not, is he online? He's not online. Councilmember Herakaris is also not online. Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns? He is also not here.
We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are none. The second item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements, which we will delay until a little bit later in the evening. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I did receive a few emails in support of the Wesley properties. I believe a lot of you have those, about 25 emails. And also forwarded a bunch of emails kind of late for, against and for the landlord ordinance. Those are in your inboxes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment, we have a relatively, relatively thin number of commentators this evening, so everyone will be given the full three minutes as allotted under the city council rules. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, beginning with Stephen Vick, who will be followed by Hugo Rodriguez and Eric Passit.
Stephen Luft.
Oh. We no longer have Steve Vick, so instead we'll begin with Hugo Rodriguez, who will be followed by Eric Passit, and then Lisa Pildes.
Good evening. My name is Hugo Rodriguez. I'm a resident of the Eighth Ward, a member of the Housing and Community Development Committee, a local housing provider, and a licensed real estate broker for over 36 years. While I do appreciate the work that the Housing and Community Development Committee has put into the RLTO amendments that will be proposed this evening, I am concerned that the committee's effort to develop housing policy that will have an impact on the entire community had not been data-driven and have, in fact, resulted in the loss of valuable committee members. We have strong tenant protections in Evanston, but we must ensure that we do not go so far in tenant protections that we render our local housing providers unable to afford, to provide affordable rental housing options in Evanston. A shortage of affordable rental housing in the midst of a housing crisis will be disastrous, especially in a community that very much relies upon it. As housing provider, I still have three remaining concerns that I would like to ask the council to return to the Housing and Community Development Committee for further discussions. I would like the city council to reconsider the late fee language originally proposed by DHCDC that was then amended at the last meeting. The original language said late fees at $25 for the first $1,000 of rent and 5% of the amount over $1,000. The amended language states that a tenant shall pay a late fee in excess of 5% of the monthly rent or $50 per month, whichever is lower, per month of late payment of rent. We encourage the council to revert back to the original policy language, which is far simpler solution to addressing late rent payments. The proposed lease non-renewal notice provisions are imbalanced. Housing providers are required to give a 90-day notice of non-renewal, but tenants are required to provide only 30-day notice for non-renewal. This will create issues not only for housing providers, but for out-of-state students or people moving into the city looking to secure a lease in advance for the, of the school year. A 60-day non-renewal notice for both parties will allow enough time for tenants and housing providers to make arrangements after deciding to not renew a lease. We identified changes in penalty language, including fee increases that were not discussed or voted on by the committee. These fees can be costly and apply to even minor mistakes. For example, a miscalculated late fee or a one-day delay in the notice period will require the landlord to reimburse the tenant for two months' rent plus attorney's fees or face a minimum of $500 fine. This is not only unnecessarily punitive, but also creates the potential for a deluge of litigation. We propose that the council eliminate the fee provisions. I believe it should be our collective goal to create a sound policy that strikes a balance between tenant protection and allowing local housing providers to continue operating in our community, and I hope that the city council will agree that the proposed language could be best protected, not only tenants' rights.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eric Passit, who will be followed by Lisa Pildes, and then Dan Schirmerhorn.
Hi, I'm Eric Passit. I'm the owner of North Shore Apartments and Conos, and I'm also a resident of the Fourth Ward. And I'm here also to speak up against the changes of the RLTO law, you know, ordinance. And I guess I want to, you know, start by saying, you know, we're all here for affordable housing, supposedly. You know, that's what this is all about. However, the changes of, even the proposed change of these laws has scared off donors. And I can have one instance in particular. One of the owners I've worked for for probably over 20 years, big courtyard building on Hinman, just sold. And one of the reasons, the largest reason was, he got sick and tired of the ordinance's changing. And really, the fear of just cause, which isn't a part of this, I understand that. But however, the talk of it, and their proposal of keep on, you know, stepping on somebody else's toes, and keep on moving forward to saying you're no longer a landlord, to saying, you know, so why am I in the business? So, he sold. And I've been helping, now, that was a very affordable, affordable building in Evanston. We had three bedrooms for $2,200 a month. Now, it might sound high, but in Evanston, that's pretty reasonable. Two bedrooms were $1,600 on Hinman, you know, south of May. That's, you know, that's a pretty, pretty reasonable rate. So, I've been helping a lot of those tenants now find new apartments. One of them went from $2,200 to $2,800. Another one went from a one-bedroom for $1,345 to $1,745. So, how did that help affordable housing? It actually did the reverse. And I've had some other owners who, you know, own smaller buildings. They're getting older, naturally, but what you hope is that they pass those buildings along to their kids. Now, we'll keep that affordable housing. If they sell out, that affordable housing's gone also. So, the older the owners get, the less they want to put up with. Now, I'm not saying you can't update the laws, but what happened last time, 12 years ago, is you actually got landlords involved. And we sat down, and I believe Alderman Ravel, you were part of that, and, and, you know, it was Alderman Wilson and Rainey at the time, and we, we went through them, and that's how we came with the updates to the landlord tenant ordinance. Not all one-sided in one direction. I mean, just, you know, and 30 days' notice, I mean, that's really putting it's crippling not only on the landlords, but on the tenants. And not only on the tenants, because they'll have showings every day. And that's not good for them. And also, the people who are looking have no time to prepare. People are calling me not only 90 days in advance, five and six months in advance. Now, yes, you push them off, but you push them off to 30 days in advance? It's, you know, it's unreasonable, is all I can say. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lisa Pildes, who will be followed by Dan Schirmerhorn, and then Aaron Bronstein, oh, sorry, Bornstein.
Hi, Lisa Pildes. And I am 70 years old, and I do wonder whether I will send my buildings on to my kids and if they'll want to. And I was on the 2012 Mayor's Committee for, as a representative of landlords. I'm a 50-year resident of Evanston. We own property in the First, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Wards. I want to speak specifically to that 30-day notice for lease renewal. Evanston has a large and diverse rental market. Although there are long-term renters, there's also a sizable group of people moving in from out of town for school and work, and then moving on to be replaced by the next group of new residents. The proposed revision, which requires this 30-day, gives the tenant 30 days to renew, the time period for the landlord to advertise the apartment, and for a new tenant to find the apartment, sign a lease, and move into the apartment is less than 30 days. Sarah Flax's memo from April reports that only Minnesota regulates how soon a landlord can require a tenant to renew their lease. That Minnesota requirement is six months, not 30 days. The changes you are contemplating will create unnecessary problems and large disruptions in the Evanston rental real estate market, especially for smaller landlords like me who rely on year-round occupancy. If you're a family moving within Evanston or moving to Evanston for a new job, or to be near family, or take advantage of our schools, imagine you can't begin this process until 30 days before you have to move, while the Evanston landlords are sitting around waiting for their tenants to decide. From my 22 years of experience as a landlord, families moving to or within Evanston begin the process at least three or four months before they expect to move. Indeed, another part of the proposed revision requires landlords to give the current tenant 90 days' notice of non-renewal, presumably, as your staff said in a last October memo, because finding safe, affordable housing may take an average of three months and possibly even longer for tenants who are low income or have a history of eviction. Or consider the situation of a Northwestern graduate or undergraduate student. In addition to thousands of graduate students, all of whom live off-campus, there are about 8,000 undergrads, and half of them live off-campus. If the proposed changes are adopted, thousands of students may have to travel to Evanston in August from all over the country, having to interrupt their summer jobs or internships and pay travel and hotel expenses to look for an apartment for September 1st. In practice, graduate students start looking three or four months before they come to campus, and undergrads begin looking for junior and senior housing at the end of their freshman year, beginning of sophomore year. The proposed revision will disrupt and artificially shorten the rental market period for families and students all over Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dan Schirmerhorn, who will be followed by Aaron Bornstein, and then Mark Carlin.
Good evening. My name is Dan Schirmerhorn. I'm with Schirmerhorn &amp; Company and a member of the North Suburban Housing Providers. My comments are similar to those that you've heard so far and that we've heard in a lot of the Housing Community Development Committee meetings. But in general, I think it might be a good idea just to point out the purpose of the ordinance when it was drafted, and as it reads at the beginning. It is to protect and promote the public health, safety, and welfare of residents, to establish rights and obligations of the housing provider and the tenant in the rental dwelling units, and to encourage housing providers and tenants to maintain and improve the quality of housing. These are all worthwhile objectives, and up till now, they have pretty much been what the ordinance has been about. But the changes that you're looking at here this evening have kind of crossed over into a situation where we're creating, to me, an unbalanced ordinance. You're taking away the ability of a landlord to sue for damages, or, I'm sorry, to include legal fees when suing for eviction, but yet a tenant is awarded two months' rent or $500 at a minimum for any minor infraction of the ordinance. That's unbalanced. You're reducing late fees to approximately 1.5% to 2.5% of the monthly rent, when the city charges 10% for our water bills if we pay them late. But you know what? We need the rents to pay the water bill. So, you're going to require us to be on time, but yet make it harder for us to collect our rent on time. The 90-day provision for renewals and non-renewals, that in of itself is probably not a big issue, but by the fact that we can't require a response from the tenant until 30 days before the lease expires, is just going to create chaos in the rental market. If all the tenants who are looking for apartments are condensed into that last 30 days before a lease expires, it's going to cause demand to go up, rents to go up. And all of these provisions that have been proposed here have an underlying unintended consequence, I believe, but still a consequence nonetheless of raising rents because of the raising overhead cost of operating a property. So, if we're trying to promote and develop quality housing and make sure that we have a housing that's affordable in Evanston, by driving the smaller and medium-sized landlords out of the business, or having them have to raise rents to cover the cost of these ordinances, we're having the opposite effect of what we're looking to try to do. So, I think, as those who have said before me, this should probably be revisited. I think, like we did 12 years ago, the task force that we were on, we put together a group of staff from the city, landlords, and people that are stakeholders in the process, to really come out and hammer out what would be reasonable objectives to solve the problem that we're trying to solve, and that is creating more affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Aaron Bornstein, who will be followed by Mark Carlin, and then William Carter.
Hi, my name is Aaron Bornstein. I'm a small housing provider here in Evanston. I have four small buildings, about eight units in town. I'm going to echo the comments that you've heard from the other, the other members of the housing community, that this ordinance has a couple areas that are particularly troublesome to us, and we're going to ask you to either vote no on it, amend it, send it back to committee, take some way to fix some of the most, largest problems that we've got. The biggest that I see is this, this huge increase in the penalties on landlords. So, the slightest violation, if you charge a dollar more than the new ordinance allows, if you don't provide, you know, one day less notice than the ordinance requires, then the penalties are, there's two months' rent you owe the tenant, plus attorney's fees, and/or depending on which section, this $500 fine. And so, this is just, this is quite substantial for a, for a smaller landlord who's, you know, that can be their whole profit margin, depending on the size of the attorney's fees, that can be all the revenue that they've generated. If you're a larger landlord, this is, this leaves you open to this class action lawsuit possibility, where they can come after you, the, the bottom-feeding plaintiff's attorneys who look for this type of exploitive thing. They can come after a large building and sue them for every unit they have in there. And two months' rent for every unit is, again, quite expensive, and you drive business out of Evanston. And we've seen this in Chicago, where these attorneys know the code well, and no one in Chicago can take a security deposit, because the security deposit rules in the, in the city of Chicago Code is so complicated that the plaintiff's attorneys feel they can always find a problem, and they always do, and then they collect this type of penalty. So, I urge you to fix this. These penalties were not discussed at the housing committee, they just sort of appeared in the draft language. We don't know where they came from. There's a number of relatively easy ways to fix it. You could vote down the ordinance, you could remove the sections that have these penalties, there's two in particular. You can do what Cook County did when they considered this. You provide a safe harbor that says, before a tenant's entitled these fees, they have to tell the landlord that they're going to seek the fees, and landlord has a few days or a week to, to fix their action, so that the plaintiff's attorneys cannot just go after them. Or you could reduce the fees to just, if you mischarge a late fee, you try to get double the late fee, whatever it is. There's a number of ways to do it, and I urge you to pick one of them and clean this up. The other issue that's been discussed is a notice provision, where landlords have to give 90 days' notice, tenants only have to give 30 days' notice of their non-renewal. Again, this should be cleaned up. Just make it fair and balanced. We're not asking for anything unfair, but this concept that, that a tenant can sit on a unit until 30 days before the lease is up is not the way the market operates anywhere. And it, and it needs to be fixed, and I hope you'll take one of a variety of ways, whatever the council decides in its wisdom, but let's clean up some of these problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mark Carlin, who will be followed by William Carter, and then Jory Kowarski.
Good evening. I'm Mark Carlin from Ninth Ward, and I want to thank the council for its deliberations on this issue. I wholeheartedly support the 13 RLTO changes, which are improvements. My wife and I are getting up in our years, and we were looking for an elevator building in Evanston, and we started a couple weeks ago. We're concerned about mobility issues as we age, and frankly, the buildings are too expensive for us to afford. We have a condo now, but it's a third-floor walk-up. I think the fact that now, the average, according to three websites, the average rent for a two-bedroom apartment is $2,450 in Evanston, I do think, while I understand where the landlords are coming from, they're being a little disingenuous. When you own a building or a unit, yes, you're getting rent, but you're also getting an appreciation in the value of the unit itself, the asset. And so, when we hear that a landlord is leaving because requirements are getting so onerous, they have to sell their building, trust me, they're selling it at a handsome profit, given the Evanston housing market. The other thing that the landlords get, which they haven't spoken about, is a tax break in the form of depreciation. So, being a landlord in Evanston, where prices of the assets plus prices for the rent are soaring, you aren't going to see any landlords leaving in droves, because they're making a mint off of this situation. This is where the marketplace is ruling, and it's ruling in a manner that makes the city of Evanston unaffordable. I think that these 13 changes are modest, very modest, changes to restore the balance, to give the tenants rights that they deserve. 43% of Evanston is a rental market, and I think, again, with all due respect to landlords, but when they complain that these conditions that the 13 RLTO changes would make would be so onerous that they might have to leave the marketplace should be taken not with just a grain of salt, but a bucket of salt. So, I commend you for considering these 13 changes. They are fair, they are moderate, they restore some balance to tenants, not excessively, but these are improvements, and I would recommend that this city council adopt them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is William Carter, who will be followed by Jory Kowarski, and then, forgive me, I'm having a lot of trouble reading the first name, but the individual's last name is Jones. Boucha? Thanks.
Good evening, council. My name is William Carter. I am a former tenant of the Wesley Apartments. I read through this, and I looked for something. I looked for accountability. I wanted to see something in here that says that if the landlords are not doing what they're supposed to do for their tenants, they were going to be held accountable. If the tenants are paying their rent and expecting certain services, services from the landlord, such as building upkeep, building maintenance, if there is an issue that the building needs, it should be met with, not ignored, until it deteriorates to the point of being condemned. Should this happen, there should be some kind of ordinance in writing that's going to make that landlord accountable. And I didn't read any of that in here, and I looked a couple of times. What I did read was something ridiculous. You want to change the name from landlord to housing provider? Rose by any other rose is still a rose. So's cow pie. If they're not taking care of their tenants, they're landlords. If they're taking advantage of their tenants, they're landlords. If they're ignoring the needs of their tenants, they're landlords. Changing their name does not change who or what they are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jory Kowarski, who will be followed by Boucha Jones, and then Ray Friedman.
Good evening. My name is Jory Kowarski. I am the Prevention Manager at Connections for the Homeless, and I'm also an Evanston resident in the Fourth Ward. Thank you to Mayor Biss and the rest of city council for hearing me speak this evening. I'm in favor of the proposed changes to the Evanston RLTO, and I want to highlight two changes that can make a big difference for tenants, specifically the adjustment to move-in fees and the notice of the lease non-renewals. As a prevention manager, my team and I try to keep residents in their homes if they cannot cover their costs of living. If necessary, we help them locate new, sustainable housing within the area. Since starting this work in 2020, I've, I've seen more and more barriers created for people trying to rent in Evanston. Some of the biggest obstacles we deal with are high upfront fees. These can be called application fees, administrative fees, hold fees, or move-in fees. These may be required instead of security deposits, or sometimes in addition to. After someone has lost their housing due to financial distress, they are now asked to pay multiple fees on top of any additional moving costs. Not to mention, paying these non-refundable fees does not guarantee them residency. The other amendment I would like to highlight is changing the notice for a lease non-renewal from 30 days to 90 days. For those who haven't recently tried to look for a rental unit, it takes much longer than 30 days to find a place and complete the application process, especially if someone is a voucher holder or needs financial assistance to help move them into a new unit. One participant that we worked, that we tried to move into new housing began their search in October 2023. It took him seven months, including regular help with our agency, to successfully find new housing. Tenants of all kinds need more notice to prepare and save and able to move. Overall, there is simply not enough affordable housing in Evanston, and for the few units that are available, the barriers to entry are getting harder to overcome. Amending the Evanston RLTO will help both tenants and landlords thrive in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Boucha Jones, who will be followed by Ray Friedman.
How are you guys? Okay, my name is Boucha Jones, and I'm here to inform you, all of you elected officials, to put you on notice that none of you have signed an oath of office to the Republic of Illinois for the body sovereigns of this township. Instead, you signed an oath of office, and you actually denied the FOIA request that was sent by the people for your oath of office and your surety bonds. That was completely denied. Okay, so instead, you signed, you signed an oath of office to a foreign corporation, because you are a corporation. This is a sign of insurrection. You do not have the proper bond, carrying surety for your action of serving the people of this community, not one of you. Due to voter fraud, you were never elected. As you are acting as if you are an authority over the people, the body sovereigns, is a direct act of treason. No one has bonds here. No one has surety here. So, you shouldn't, you are operating in fraud, the whole council here. Today, the body sovereign is presenting each of you with a notice of liability to cure. Which you were actually sent on May 24th electronically, every single one of you. You ignored that, too. The fine accumulated is $1.75 million per claim, 17 claims, and there are 12 signatures, and you are each personally liable for over $29 million. Every single one of you, because you're operating in fraud. If you do not resign within the next three days, as you have been presenting, you will be presented with a writ of quote warrant, and attached waiver of tort, in which you have three days to submit to. Three days. If you do not rebut these truths and remain in office, we will be notifying the military, and your act of treason will be grounds for an immediate military tribunal. You should all know the penalties for treason, because you are operating as a corporation. We, the body sovereign, here command you to resign with three days, or else face the consequences. Attached to this, attached to this statement, I am handing you, this is a thumb drive, right here, from the Caris Project, Dale and Kasha Caris, which has thousands of pages documented of crimes against humanity, with basically fluoride in our water, radiation from smart vehicles, radiation from 5G towers. I have six seconds left. warnings of the dangers of the COVID vaccinations and other dangers.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
So, I command you to send a public announcement to every resident of this community in the township of Evanston, notifying them of the dangers, and if you refuse, you will be in violation, direct violation of your alleged duty, making you accountable for your actions. You have been served, every single one of you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Good evening, everyone. Lots to talk about again, so I'd like to start by asking why you're, why you're keeping residents from attending all city all city meetings. I believe it was last Tuesday, there were three ward meetings on that night at the same time, including five aldermen and two different ward meetings at Robert Crown. Please hold city meetings on different days so that all of us can attend. Next, thank you for asking residents to help to choose the next sculpture at Quinlan Park. What about input from residents on the future of city hall? Before you decide to spend millions of dollar, of taxpayer dollars on rent for a temporary city hall, is this the best use of taxpayer dollars? Why would you allow city hall to fall, to fall into such disrepair that you don't want to use it? Same question for the three buildings on Wesley. I know you have inspectors in Evanston that give violations to Tina regularly, and I received one as well, but no violations on the three buildings on Wesley. Why is that? And you knew about Wesley issues for the last two to four years, but now you have to shut down, close up, and kick out all the residents from a possible 24 units of affordable housing? And what's going to happen to those three buildings now? Something's very wrong here in Evanston. What happened to the transparency and accountability that we keep hearing about? You can use Robert Crown for a temporary city hall or use Harley Clark for a temporary city hall instead of letting it sit there, deteriorate, as you did with the three eight-unit buildings over on Wesley. It's time for some big changes here. We will not solve our problems by spending more and borrowing more. You can fix this. Please start now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the end of the physical sheet of paper on which people signed up to speak in person, but several people signed up online to speak in person. They will be next, beginning with Dominic Fawes, followed by Mary Dislouver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the council. I'll try and be quick here. I think folks know the position of myself and of open communities, but I have a few things I want to make mention to, as I know just over half the council is sort of just entering this discussion now that's been going on for about a year and a half. So just to say, we emphatically support strengthening renters' rights in Evanston at a macro level. We've all sort of become accustomed to a constant state of crisis in the housing market and the housing system in the U.S. You know, where we live predicts a vast amount about our wealth, our health, educational opportunities, et cetera. And power imbalances continue greatly between those who own property and those who rent it. Now, we're not going to solve all of those issues with the Evanston R L T O. Rather, I think these proposals seek to set a reasonable set of floors for tenants and landlords' rights and responsibilities. I trust that many landlords here are good, reasonable business owners, but public policy 101 tells us that we don't design our laws starting from that position. Most drivers are, drivers are responsible, but we need stop signs and speed limits because some are not. So most of the changes being discussed tonight passed out of committee rather easily despite a year and a half of conversation. Those conversations were often contentious, and I'm just going to posit that I think those meetings were often contentious, quite frankly, because of one simple reason, which is that business owners generally, rationally, don't support heightened regulation of their business. Some of the aversion is reasonable. We don't want to overburden our very small owner-occupied landlords who provide naturally occurring affordable housing. That's true. But business owners are also capable of and should be mandated to follow basic rules. We need to seek, you know, not just sort of splitting the pie and saying, some for you over here, some for you over here, some sort of sense of being fair and balanced. Instead, we need to seek what is just and what is right in terms of that, that power balance. So capping late fees, making sure move-in fees are actually related to actual costs, what a concept, having those be transparent, strengthening the right to organize. I think these are common sense. Providing a one-time right to pay and stay across the county, this has given meaning to the early resolution program that allows tenants to seek and obtain emergency rental assistance when there's an eviction filed. So having that one-time right has been critical for our partners in Chicago. So I encourage swift passage, passage of these rules, and furthermore, and the last thing I'll say here, in the strongest possible terms, I also recommend we include in this set of reforms, a policy that's been recommended by the National Low Income Housing Coalition, the Biden White House, Mayor Brandon Johnson's administration, a policy that's in place in all public housing across the country for decades, and that is just cause. This will increase the stability and community cohesion, curb retaliatory and discriminatory non-renewals
Thank you very much.
and reflect a basic understanding of fairness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Dislouver.
I've lived in Evanston since the mid-'70s and owned a two-flat, and I've seen a lot of changes since that time, and I'm very concerned with the most recent changes because I almost feel, you know, loving Evanston like I do and, and our whole family, I almost feel like there's a war on landlords, or at least an assault on landlords recently. I agree very much with Mr., with Mr. Bornstein said about the notice being 90 days difficult if it's 90 days for, that landlords have to give and only 30 days for tenants. People said there wouldn't be a lot of people or landlords leaving. I beg to differ with that. My, I have a two-flat, both my tenants had been there in excess of eight years. We have two-bedroom apartments, and they pay about $1,450. I haven't raised the rent in eight years because I'm very close with my tenants, as are many small landlords. But what's happening now is my one tenant had to leave in December due to a family illness in, in Colorado, and I decided not to rent the apartment. And I decided not to rent it, not because I didn't need the income I do, but because of these rules that are coming through that almost are very difficult, especially just cause. And also penalties such as the 200 or $500 penalty and two-month rent if you make a mistake. Where does that come from? I'm an attorney, retired attorney by background. I did due process, federal litigation with jurisdictions. And I ask, where's the rational relationship between that kind of penalty and, and a small break or a small day or two possible, you know, problem that the landlord didn't catch on to? I'm not saying that if someone, a landlord is chronically breaking rules, then yes, they maybe they should be punished, but where does this come from? Two of my friends, I have a number of friends that own small apartments in, in Evanston. Two of them, both have decided to sell in Evanston. One's already got two of his units on, and the other one told me she's in the process of it, and I'm very close to it. So I would just ask you to reconsider, what is this attack on landlords about right now? I think landlords and tenants should sit down. We should work these things out. We've never thought of having mediation. I don't know why, other cities do. What's the problem with that? If there's a landlord and tenant having a problem, let's talk about it before we come down with a, you know, Maxwell Silver Hammer on their head. But at any rate, I want to thank you for giving me the time and hope that you'll consider my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would the clerk please add Councilmember Burns to the roll? This concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comment. We now move ahead to the online portion of public comment, and there are just a couple people who've signed up. Sarah Buckley, who will be followed by Mary Rosinski. I do not believe that I see a Sarah Buckley in the Zoom. Is that correct, Luke? So if it's right that there is not, at this time, a Sarah Buckley in the Zoom, we'll move ahead with Mary Rosinski. Sorry, if you're not able to unmute yourself, that could be an issue on our end that we're resolving. Just give us one second, Ms. Rosinski. And would the clerk also please add Councilmember Reed to the roll, who's in the Zoom?
Hi, thank you for fixing the problem. I'm here on behalf of, of being a landlord and also as a realtor and as having family and friends that rent in Evanston. And I think I'd like to address the fact that I think everyone that I have talked to that's a landlord or a realtor does want to have good apartments. We want portable units, but we also have a lot of expenses. Taxes in Evanston are very high, and the city of Evanston just, you know, you, you raise the water bills like 14% as has been said earlier. There's a lot of other fees that landlords have. And so we don't want to start something that causes unintended consequences. And I, like the lady before me, generally don't raise rents, and if we do, it's nominal to maybe go with an increase that the city is doing. But by doing, by doing onerous regulations and not talking and having mediation, you will have a lot of people, I do believe, whether you're small mom and pops and the naturally occurring affordable housing units, have increased their units to reduce their risk, because this is business, and it's not, not a public run, there's no public incentive for most of these people. And when you have investment hedge bonds and those guys owning these big new buildings, there's different write-offs then for smaller people. But there's also, one other thing I want to say is that we talk about naturally occurring affordable housing and non-naturally. In Evanston, the places that are the older units, that are in anyway from 30 to 100 years old, those units, and I will provide you the information, send it to you all, generally tend to rent at 30 to 40% less than anything built in the last 20 years. So we're lumping everything together and talking about increases, and I would just really encourage you to talk, as people have said, get landlords, get tenant organizations in a room where there can be a healthy discussion and people not shutting down each other's. And look at what everybody needs to have done. Hugo and Mr. Bornstein, they brought up really good points. Please go back and listen to them. And Mr. Carter brought up a point that I think is really important, and it doesn't fall in the land, the, the city has property standards. They have fees that they're supposed to be assessing to bad landlords, and I am all in favor of these people having to pay their fees and their penalties. But if the city is not going to enforce it, then that's a city problem. That's not a, a good landlord problem. And so there's fees for $500 or this or that, and they need to be addressed. And landlords, there's a huge landlord-tenant ordinance we give to all of our tenants. So people who maybe don't know, and it's very explicit, but we need balance. And the last thing I want to say is that
Thank you very much.
[bleep] is. Okay, can I just say, you will cause a lack of demand of supply for affordable housing and housing if you limit it to 30-day notice, because everyone's going to be looking
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening. We will return now to City Manager Public Announcements.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Mendoza. I'm pleased to share that Camon Hendricks, organizer of Argentines festivities, is here to make a brief presentation on our upcoming events. Welcome, Camon.
Sorry, I was late. So Juneteenth, America's Real Freedom Day. That is my motto. That is the truth, right? We can go to the next slide. What is Juneteenth? Oh, thank you. Awesome. What is Juneteenth? Everyone knows that in 1776, America got its independence. The land, the American land got its independence. But the men weren't all free. The men weren't all created, weren't, weren't all treated equally. After that, the Emancipation Proclamation was signed, and it was supposed to be the official ending of slavery. Juneteenth occurred because that's not what happened. Over two and a half years later, there was over 200,000 enslaved people in Galveston, Texas, who did not know they were free. Through different measures, the South was, of course, one of the most rebellious states, right? And there's a lot of debate on, you know, the reason why so many enslaved people still didn't know that they were free. You know, there's a lot of theories that goes around, but at the end of the day, we all know that there are over 200,000 people who were being held against their will that did not know that it was now illegal to own slaves. So Juneteenth occurred on June 19th, 1865, when Union soldiers had to march down to Galveston, Galveston, Texas to spread the news of the Emancipation Proclamation, and they had to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation. They did that through collective efforts as wise as reading the General Order Number Three. This is the General Order Number Three. They read it out loud. They also posted it in certain areas of the community. So when the enslaved people came out, they were able to see this and know that they were now free. Ever since that day, black people have been celebrating Juneteenth as their freedom day. This is the day that was filled with not just commemoration, but joy, food, dance, prayer, you name it. It was the day that we were able to celebrate that we were now truly free. Juneteenth is over 150-year holiday. It took up until 2021 for Joe Biden to make Juneteenth a federal holiday. And making Juneteenth a federal holiday is a form of reparations. It is satisfaction. So it took over 150 years for us to get satisfaction of Juneteenth becoming a federal holiday and acknowledging that Juneteenth does exist because it's something that's not in our textbooks, it's something that is not taught in schools. So a lot of people debate, why does Juneteenth need to be a federal holiday? Why? Why do we need to celebrate Juneteenth on such a large level? Because Juneteenth is satisfaction. Juneteenth is the truth, and Juneteenth is America's Real Freedom Day. Juneteenth in Evanston. We all know that Juneteenth in Evanston started with the late and great Heiki Pow. In 2019, I, I did my first Juneteenth celebration in collaboration with Heiki Pow at the Noyes Cultural Arts Center. This is photos of it that you are seeing right now. And then we began to plan Evanston's first Juneteenth parade. And we all know what happened after that. So we turned it virtual, and these are little screenshots of the summer of 2020, where we had a car parade, a virtual parade, Juneteenth pop-up shops, things of that nature. And it was, it was, it was a wonderful time to still have something going on in Evanston after everything was closed and everything was being canceled. So Juneteenth this year, as we all know, our grand marshal this year is our wonderful second ward alderman, Chrissy. And we are also introducing several new awards. Heiki Pow will be receiving the Juneteenth Legacy Award, and his son, Heiki, will be there to receive the award for him. We will have, you know, all of our Jesse White tumblers, we'll have our South Shore Drill Team, we'll have our Juneteenth Creative Dance Team, E T H S Marching Band. This is our route, which is pretty much the same this year, except we'll be stepping off from Lee and Dodge this year. So everyone, get your lawn chairs out to see the festivities. After that, we'll end up here in the back of the city hall, and we'll have more performances, we'll have food, we'll have vendors, and I will be also giving out more awards. off from Lee &amp; Dodge this year. So everyone, get your lawn chairs out to see the festivities. After that, we'll end up here in the back of the City Hall, and we'll have more performances. We'll have food, we'll have vendors, and I will be also giving out more awards. Now, I want to challenge every ward to turn out Juneteenth this Saturday. I will be giving out the Ward Award this year. I am challenging you all to invite as many people as possible from your ward to attend the this year's Juneteenth Parade. I will have my volunteers out there to tally up the numbers, and let's see what ward wins this year. What ward is going to show up and have the most residents and win the Ward Award Contest? There's different ways you can do that. You can have the people show up with your ward number on there. You can have them email me, just some way to recognize that this is your ward. You can also take posters to businesses in your ward, help promote via social media, and, you know, anything else that you can think of to spread the word. It's all about Juneteenth awareness, and as we all know, Juneteenth became a federal holiday for a reason. There's a reason why we celebrate it here in Evanston, and there's a reason why it's getting bigger every year. And I challenge you all to help me make it bigger this year. And there goes our special Juneteenth Ward map. I could print this out for everyone if you'd like. Yeah, that would really look nice at the City Council, right? So that's our Juneteenth Ward map. Thank you.
Just want to say thank you so much, Ms. Hendricks, for helping with all your hard work and efforts to help us celebrate properly. Thank you.
That concludes City Manager's announcements. Thank you so much, Ms. Hendricks. Looking forward to this Saturday. We now move to Special Orders of Business. Is there a motion relative to Item SP1?
Mr. Mayor, I will move Item SP1, Ordinance 58-024, establishing ranked choice voting for elected officials in the City of Evanston as approved by voter referendum.
Councilmember Newsman moves introduction of Ordinance 58-024. Councilmember Wynn, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please
No, I'm sorry. No, my hand is raised.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I don't know where to start with this. This, so one, the the, as our last rules meeting, council voted to receive an update from our outside law firm, and that hasn't been received yet by council. Can someone clarify as to why we have not received that?
Yes, thank you for asking, Councilmember. The direction from the city was for our outside counsel to investigate whether it would be necessary and appropriate for the city to enter into litigation with the county clerk's office. Shortly thereafter, I learned that the county clerk was gravely ill. I thought it was totally inappropriate for the city, under those circumstances, to enter into a hostile litigation with the county clerk's office, and so we backed off. Tragically, the county clerk passed away, has since been replaced. And there are there are outside groups that are concerned about the pace of implementation of this, who are interested in continued advocacy on this topic. And this ordinance is something that actually you yourself have floated as something that could potentially be a relevant part of implementation. And so this is this is an act in support of any effort to make sure that the will of the voters of Evanston, as overwhelmingly expressed in November of 2022, is reflected in the way elections are implemented in April of 2025. But so that's sort of the whole story here. To answer your direct question, because of the tragic circumstances relative to Karen Yarborough's health and eventual passing, the city backed away from that effort.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. And that is not my recollection of the of events. My recollection is that the council and Rules Committee voted to receive, not to file a lawsuit against the county to implement ranked choice voting, but to simply get information as to, you know, an update as to the legality of ranked choice voting or the method that we entered into. And I think even having this ordinance before us is an acknowledgement that maybe, you know, folks like myself, who've had concerns about the way we've gone about this, were right. So I'm curious from the Law Department, why are we passing this ordinance?
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. Alex Rugge, Corporation Counsel. Councilmember Reed, it's exactly as the mayor just explained. There's certain advocacy groups in the community that wish to seek implementation, and so this ordinance was advised to assist those efforts.
How does this assist the efforts?
It is my understanding that the ordinance just strengthens the argument for implementation. And so that was the direction we were given.
How does this strengthen the argument for implementation?
I'd have to look into that further and get back to you.
Okay. So it seems as though we don't know why we're passing this ordinance. No offense to our law department. I know you're following directions from the mayor, but it seems like we don't know why we're passing this ordinance. And then if you read the ordinance, it doesn't achieve the goals that, you know, folks like myself who have raised concerns, that that an ordinance, an implementation ordinance, would need to have in it. If you read any piece of legislation around ranked choice voting, there are very particular, there's particular language in there around ballot design, around how ballots are counted. This is the information that we needed to have in an ordinance before the voters went to the ballot box to vote on this, so they actually understood what they were voting for. Ranked choice voting sounds great, but if the details are not there, we could potentially be implementing a system that makes it tougher for folks to vote, not easier. And we have dropped the ball on this. We, unlike communities who have implemented ranked choice voting, we have not done our due diligence from from the passing of the resolution to the passing of this ordinance to even informing voters. New York City, when they passed ranked choice voting, they spent a whole year educating folks about ranked choice voting and how to vote and what the ballot will look like. This is not what we have done here. And this ordinance does not even come close to meeting our needs for getting this implemented. We need to pump the brakes. We need to realize that we did it wrong. Admit it. It was wrong. We rushed through. Folks didn't listen. We need to take a step back, and we need to do this right. This ordinance is not doing it right. It is missing necessary information. And I'm not sure why we're here. And I think we need to pause this. We need to table this. We need to get the legal analysis from our law department, from the outside law firm, about why we're passing this ordinance, about what should be included in this ordinance. We need to pass the ordinance. And then, after passing the ordinance, according to case law, that is when it is appropriate to then move a referendum forward for the voters to approve or not. It is, and I invite the lawyers out there who are interested in this to read the case law, read Harnett v. City of Evanston, read the relevant case law, and understand that in order for a referendum like this to be binding, there must not be any steps left up to the county clerk's office to make up after the fact, make up procedures and rules after the fact. And and that is what we're still going to be leaving the county clerk's office to do. And so according to Illinois case law, voters could not have appropriately voted on this scheme, which is not codified in state law, not codified in county law, not codified in local law. Voters didn't know what they're voting for. And I implore us, I implore this council for once on this issue, to pump the brakes and actually do our due diligence. So I move to tape or I move to, yeah, I move to table this to our next meeting with the hopes of actually getting legal analysis on why we're doing this, what are the necessary, what is the necessary legal framework for ranked choice voting, and let's do this right. So I move to table this for our next meeting.
The motion fails for lack
I'll second. I mean, I want to support ranked choice voting, but I am concerned that we are, I would like a better explanation as to why we're moving this forward.
All right. Councilmember Reed moves to table this item to the June 24 meeting. Councilmember Kelly, seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll on the motion to table?
Councilmember Saffordin?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Kelly? Uh, sorry, Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Wynn? Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
With two voting in favor and six voting against, the motion fails and the item is not tabled. Councilmember Burns.
If, I'm sorry, was my time expired?
Yes, your time has expired, Councilmember.
Okay.
Happy to support this and hope that this encourages Cook County to to respond to this. I don't think we've gotten a response, is what I'm hearing from Mayor Bis. So hopefully this encourages them to respond. I do just want to go on record to simplify this. Councilmember Reed has said from the start that to do this right, you pass an ordinance like this before a referendum. And the issue he's having now is that even, one, it's it's the wrong timing. This was supposed to be done before the referendum was passed. And that in the ordinance itself, it has to spell out exactly how it is to be executed in great detail. And he said that from the beginning. He said a lot, so I just want to make sure people aren't lost at what he's saying. I do recall at at our Rules Committee meeting that we didn't ask for our law department to determine whether or not we should pursue a lawsuit with the county. I remember us just asking for clarification on this particular legal analysis. Again, happy to support this, to be a team player. Hopefully, this encourages the Cook County to give us answers, but I just, I want to make sure everybody's clear on on what Councilmember Reed is describing. And and I think he's right. And I think the fact that we're coming back now to pass this ordinance suggests that he is correct in his concerns. So we'll see what Cook County ultimately says, but I'll support this today. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll on the underlying ordinance?
Councilmember Saffordin?
Yes.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Excuse, I'm sorry, I was muted. I was asking for 30 seconds to to close.
Mayor Bis?
I mean, I'm going to ignore the phrase "to close." I guess I'll give you 30 seconds and say that that's the that's the last kind of the last time allocation violation that I'll allow this evening. Go ahead.
Thank you. I I really encourage my colleagues. I mean, this is, I really want you to think about this. Imagine a few months down the line when this, when we have voters thinking that they're going to have ranked choice voting, and we don't. And this council, this will be a grand example of when democracy fails, when you have a group of folks who just are not listening one iota to someone who actually knows what the hell they're talking about.
Thank you very much. Those are your 30 seconds.
This is a shame. This is really disappointing, and I'm disappointed in all of you for not even
Councilmember Reed, we're
Spreading this out knowing damn well
Councilmember Reed, what is it? Do you, Councilmember Reed, what's your, Councilmember Reed, what is your vote on this issue?
My vote is hell no.
Okay. Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting aye and one voting hell no, the motion carries. Ordinance 58-024 is introduced, and we'll do this again in two weeks for action. This brings us now to the consent agenda. I already know we have to remove Items P4 and AP1 from the consent agenda. Are there other items folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
A2, please, Mr. Mayor. A9 and A11.
A2, A9, A11.
And HCDC1.
And HCDC1.
A3, please.
A3.
A4.
A4. FB1.
And A5 and 6.
A5 and A6. So it looks like we have so far A2, A3, A4, A5, A6, A9, A11, P4, HCDC1, FB1, and AP1. Is there anything else left? Yeah, let me read that again. It's a long list. A2, A3, A4, A5, A6, A9, A11, P4, HCDC1, FB1, and AP1. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move the consent agenda minus those eight, those items previously stated. Let me start over. I move the consent agenda minus those items previously stated.
Councilmember Newsman moves approval of the consent agenda except for the following items: A2, A3, A4, A5, A6, A9, A11, P4, HCDC1, FB1, and AP1. Councilmember Wynn, seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. And the consent agenda, with the exception, with the 11 exceptions previously read, is passed. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion relative to Item A2?
Sure. I'd like to move Item A2. Let's see, one moment. Oh, thank you. Item A2, approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Burns, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordin?
Aye, abstain.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries and the activity is approved. Councilmember Kelly on Item A3?
I'd like to move Item A3, approval of a single-source contract with Singh &amp; Associates to provide Phase III construction engineering services for the Streetlight Improvement Project.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of a single-source contract with Singh &amp; Associates for Phase III, Phase III construction engineering services for the Streetlight Improvement Project. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to refer to some written communication I had with staff earlier today. Members of the council were, I believe, copied on it on this early this afternoon. So my my comments and observations here have to do with Item A3 as well as A6, where we are, you know, retaining the same firm to perform some outsourced construction engineering services. These two items together will cost us $240,000, and this is work that needs to get done. I'm going to approve both of these because we need to do this work. I think it would be more cost-effective to hire additional civil engineers and to do as much of this work in-house as possible. And the work that we are paying $240,000 for, staff has estimated, would take approximately three-quarters of a full-time, full-time equivalent civil engineer. For that same amount of money, we could get one, maybe two, at least one, if not two, full-time civil engineers. So, yeah, I understand the civil engineering market is tight, and we might need to consider increasing the salary for engineers. Even if we do that, I think we would still come out ahead. So I just want to share these observations. I'll I'll go ahead and vote in favor of both of these, but I would really like to bring this work in-house.
Councilmember Harris?
Good evening. I'm wondering if somebody can tell me what the West and Tiff has in it before we spend it? Okay, I'm sorry. Ignore me.
I'm not going to ignore you, but we can move to the next person.
Ignore that one.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. And I want to also support what Councilmember Nusma is saying regarding bringing this in-house, both A3 and A6. And are there currently positions posted, engineers that would cover these positions? Are we, can someone speak to that?
Yes, that's correct. We are currently recruiting for them.
Okay, we are. And did we recently, so I know one position's been posted for a while. Is that correct, since last year? And another one was just recently posted?
Correct. It's really difficult to recruit civil engineers right now.
Okay. And did we, I think we modified the level, like from a three to a two, is that right? In order to recruit, to have a better, no, we haven't, we haven't modified the job. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we did just hire an assistant city engineer, which helps in the arena as well.
Okay. And do we have, I mean, I'm just wondering what the status is because I know, you know, we're using, we're outsourcing companies that are able to hire these, these personnel. So do we have applications in? I mean, what is the status?
We are receiving applications. It's on an ongoing basis. And our preference is always to have in-house staff wherever we can.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Again, I'll support this, but you know, I would just like to know what we, I hope we can find some means of getting folks hired. If other companies are hiring, I think we should be able to, after a year of having a position posted, get some positions, get these filled more quickly. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the role?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. Now on item A4, Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion?
Sure. I move item A4, approval of professional services agreements for RFP 24-10 for supplemental plan review and inspection services.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of professional services, professional services agreements just mentioned. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
So same question here. I'm, you know, it looks like we're expanding our outsourcing here with regard to inspection services.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, City Manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza, Sarah Flax, Community Development Director. We're not consciously expanding it, but we are in a situation where we have a lot of stuff that isn't our normal workload and we need to have third party to back that up. The stadium is one of them. So for our number of inspections and stuff is going to go up substantially. We do ultimately want to add a fifth inspector because we think that would be better for the city overall. And that will be proposed in the 2025 budget. We're also going to be revising our cost structure. For the longest time, we'd been charging $45 per inspection. And it's time we raise some of those things to help offset those costs. But we have backup. It's important that we have backup all the time, simply because our work ebbs and flows, not always on predictable basis. And we have a lot of new development that is being talked about, so we need to be prepared for that. We're actually recommending two firms because in some cases we can't get everything we need from one. Safe Built, we've had a long relationship and they're doing a lot of very important work for us, including the review of the stadium. So we're obviously going to continue to work with them. BNF gives us additional depth. It's been very hard to find plumbers, plumbing inspectors. That is something that we haven't been able to find. So this is really to fill in when all of our inspectors are busy. It also helps us offset when people are on vacation, which is another challenge, so that we can keep everything going in a timely manner.
Thank you very much. I guess I'd like to know, I mean, how much we're spending annually on this sort of outsourcing, both for permitting and for now for inspections? I mean, I know I had a personal experience when I first started with permitting being done, you know, by a firm that I'm sure does great work, but because they weren't here, aren't in the community, they made a mistake and permitted a driveway that then had to be pulled up because the property owner said they were replacing existing driveway and it wasn't. And that's just because, again, it was outsourced as opposed to someone working in the community. So my question is like, how, and I don't expect you necessarily to have the answer right now, but you know, how much we're spending annually on this? And I imagine these would be union positions. Do we, when we outsource for something like this, is that something that gets negotiated with our unions? If these would be union member positions? For example, the inspector, I'm just asking the question.
All of those positions are union, but it isn't a negotiation with the union because we're, it's an outside contract, so.
I understand. But when we, when we contract for positions that would otherwise be union, that just as, just as matter of, point of information, we don't, that's not something we sit down with and negotiate. If we decide rather than hiring more, whether it's inspectors or whatever the position is, we don't, as par for course, that isn't negotiated with, with our unions when we outsource rather than hire?
No. But remember, this is really overflow. I mean, it's, we're not trying to replace our own inspectors or plan reviewers. And actually, last year, we hired a full-time plan reviewer. For the first time, we'd been outsourcing over half of our plan reviews. So we're now really balancing that. It's my desire to have more of our own staff as well because it's a better product for all of us. One of the challenges with our community is we're not doing ground up new buildings a lot. And one of the most complicated things is when you're adding on and you're trying to get to current code and you also have something that could be 150 years old. So I agree with you. It's definitely desirable to have more of our own staff all the time and I'll certainly push for that. But we also need the backup.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
I just wanted to, you know, I endorse this from talking, I held a meeting with contractors way back when, you know, in the beginning of the term, when I think all of us were receiving a lot of calls about issues with permits. And they've been acknowledged that it's tough to find good people to fill these, these positions. It requires somebody that has a lot of experience, which you don't get overnight. And we all, we hear in the trades in general that, that there's a lot of people who are retiring and then who is that, who are those next folks who are going to assume those positions? But they need time to build up that experience. So it's difficult. It's a challenge that even contractors have acknowledged. I would say while we figure that out, we should continue to work with companies like this. It's the reason why I certainly haven't received, you know, many calls recently. Obviously, we're getting into the busier months now that we're in the summer. But I think while we try to continue to identify good talent to fill these inspector positions, this has been something that has not only reduced the amount of calls that I've received, but ultimately it gets, you know, homeowners and property owners the permits they need to do the work on their property. So I support this. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Saffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the agreements are approved. Now on item A5, Councilmember Kelly?
I'd like to move item A5, approval of contract with Alliance Contractors Incorporated for the sidewalk and street light improvement project bid 24-26.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of the contract just described. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Harris?
Okay, now I know what I'm talking about. Sorry about that earlier. I wanted to know, was Paul here still? I wanted to know, or somebody who could tell me what the Tiff looks like. Hi, Paul. Oh, Laura, okay. I'll take.
I thank you, members of the city council. My name's Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. So currently, the Tiff has approximately $4 million with $2 million obligated to property acquisitions and HODC. So there's about $2 million available for capital improvement in 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. So same line of questioning regarding bringing this in-house. I know we have employees, we have about seven that do street lighting in terms of just general repairs and maybe changing. Is there, again, I don't know what we're spending annually on this, but would it be, would we have the work to bring this position or positions in-house for this sort of lighting that we need?
This project involves quite a lot of civil work, not just electrical work. And it is a large project. So it would typically be outside the capacity, even if all of our positions were filled, for us to do this in-house. But I mean, it is possible to, we do a number of large projects and we've generally been expanding the capital program to deal with some of the infrastructure issues. So yes, this is the kind of work that we could do in-house, although we would contract out the electrical design work. That's a relatively small portion.
Okay. So that would be, I'd be very interested in seeing us create those positions. I mean, I understand now we need to move forward on this, but if, it seems like this type of work, there would be, as you mentioned, enough that we could, you know, bring that in-house. And I think we've all expressed our interest in bringing as much of this work in-house as possible. And again, I guess that question, I understand that as we outsource to outside contractors with what would otherwise be, you know, union jobs, there's no, am I understanding that correctly? That we don't engage with the union on that? Like, say we need, we want to hire, we want to outsource three positions that would be like full-time, but to an outside contractor. There's no, I mean, I assume there isn't, but I just wanted to ask the question.
No, I don't generally specifically reach out to the union because those positions are not filled. So it's just a question of staff not being available.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, of course, our, again, our preference is always to have in-house. But we also have an obligation to deliver these projects and to serve the residents. And in the other case, in Sarah's case, all those positions are filled right now. There are no vacancies. So we have to move forward and deliver the work. And part of it, when we, when you contract with outside services, is we're also trying to alleviate the burden and alleviate the queues of these union workers that have work overflowing. We're trying to help them out.
Understood. It's about adding more positions rather than, and not currently at this one, but understanding that there is this kind of workload, both in inspections and permitting and in lighting, that we in fact are paying so much every year anyway, discussions about adding those positions to our roles.
Sure. When I, when I did bring up positions last year in the budget, for this very reason, there was a lot of skepticism. So I hope when we have that conversation this coming year, then that won't be there. Because that is the point of these new positions, when we bring those forward, is to offset them, so.
And I think it would be helpful to know if we don't hire, we're going to be outsourcing. We're going to be hiring consultant firms.
Right. We were very clear about that last fall. So I look forward to your support on that.
Thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. So we go back for a second crack to Councilmember Harris with four minutes and 40 seconds left.
Yep, I won't take all of that. This is a great project. Oh, I lost Laura. I don't really need you, but I needed something to look at. So it's going to be you. And great looking at you. This was a great project. We did some community involvement on a number of, a number of times. We walked this area. There is no sidewalks in certain part of this area. It's a very busy thoroughfare where our students are walking to school with great potential for harm if we don't get these sidewalks. We have to do some extra work to make it work because there's existing things in the, in the way. But I'm very excited about this project. It started before I was seated and then when I saw the scope of work, I changed it. And I'll be honest about that. I was like, nope, that's not what I want, would like to see happen. And we made some adjustments. So I know that set us back, but I'd really love to get this project moving. It's coming out of the Tiff, which is appropriate use of money for that neighborhood. And I'm very excited about it. I ride my bike over there and I think it will be really good for the area, for our students, for our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a question and public comment about the 50-50 program, which I know we no longer have. The city doesn't call it this. I call it the 100-0 program or the 0-100 program. So maybe you could just take a minute to explain what our current approach is for sidewalks.
Sure. In 2021, the council approved the staff recommendation to disband the 50-50 sidewalk improvement program, which was based on an entirely voluntary 50% cost share with the property owner to replace sidewalks. It had been in place for more than four decades. And since some people never agreed to replace the sidewalks in front of their house, that we had sidewalks that were deteriorated for more than 40 decades with no repair, or more than four decades with no repair. So we have replaced it with a fully funded by the city of Evanston program.
100-0.
The 100-0 program, where we prioritize the most critical locations based on what kind of facilities are on that block. So we're still working through Phase 1, which is schools and senior facilities. But we're going to be wrapping that up in the next year or so and then we'll be moving on to Phase 2. And that, we're, it's easier to manage because we're in fewer locations and we are able to get better pricing because contractors aren't jumping all over town. Consequently, there is a thing where if you really feel it's important to have your sidewalk square replaced immediately, you can pay 100% and participate in the program and you'll just pay the city's, the full cost of that. That program also included sidewalk gap infills where no sidewalk existed. And we had not had a regular program, although every once in a while, there was a section of sidewalk that was installed. But since then, we have also been budgeting for that. And this is, while we've done a number of locations, this is a really major jump forward on sidewalk gap infill. And it's very exciting to see it come together.
Thank you.
And this area doesn't have sidewalks. These are completely sidewalk void, so.
Yes. There was also a question and public comment about the streetlights because we pour the, the streetlight foundations, impact the sidewalk. So we want to just, if we're going to make changes, do it now before we pour new sidewalk. And we, we, the city council in 2018 approved a streetlight master plan in which we are in process of upgrading all the Talmage lights and all the David Arm lights to LED fixtures. It is not speedy because we generally don't have a large budget. We instead buy the fixtures and our staff upgrades the fixtures. On the big streetscape projects like Main Street, we just do it under the projects. In this particular case, we are also upgrading all the fixtures so that there'll be LED downward pointing. They still have the appearance of the same Talmage lights. They just are a little bit more environmentally friendly.
Councilmember Burns?
Following up on Councilmember Nusma's question, so as I recall, the phases, there are several streets within each phase. Within each phase, do we have like, okay, we're going to do this street first and this street next? Because I get quite a bit of calls about this and I am able to explain to them, we don't do the 50-50 anymore. But giving folks a sense of timing on when they could expect their street, if they're one of the phases, I think everybody's in the phases. But when their street is going to, when the sidewalks on their street are going to be done would be helpful. So I don't know if you have that information now or if that's something that we can get? Or is it, are those decisions made, you know, months before the improvements are made? Just any, any information about that would be helpful.
Okay. We do generally, we don't have a long-term plan within each phase. This first phase is particularly long because there are a lot of schools at Evanston.
Yeah.
But after this, it should start going more quickly and each phase will be a much shorter time period. But what has been happening is that some years, we think it's going to be these, these eight blocks. And then there's so much work that we only get six blocks done before we run out of money. And then we kind of just shift the next two blocks. So it's been a little bit squishable in terms of what's getting done exactly when.
Okay.
But we are generally working within the phases. It's just been a lot of work.
Yeah, just if, if there's ever a point where you are able to prioritize the phases themselves and you feel good about that priority list, I'd love to have access to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time. So we go back to Council At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time. So we go back to Councilmember Kelly with three minutes and a half, 30 seconds left.
Thank you. I think you mentioned what I was hoping to hear about adjusting lights so they point downward. I've heard a lot of residents say, you know, our lovely lights are not streetlights, they're tree lights. So that's great. So even our Talmadge, those will be configured terrific. Okay, thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Suffolkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion on item A6?
I'd like to move item A6, approval of amendment number one to the contract with Singh and Associates for construction engineering services related to the sidewalk and streetlight improvement project, RFP 2216.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of amendment one to the contract just described. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing not, ooh, Councilmember Harris.
Again, this is part of that project that we think will enhance the second ward. So I look forward to you all's support.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Suffolkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the amendment is approved. Now on item A9. Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion?
Item A9, approval. I move approval for rate increase for 2025, 2026 athletic field permit fees.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves to accept and place on file this staff recommendation relative to rates of the athletic field permit, athletic field permits. Councilmember Nguyen, I believe, seconds. Councilmember Suffolkin.
Yeah, I just wanted to check our staff and make sure that all the organizations that'll be affected by this are aware of it. They may not have loved it, but they know it's coming and they're aware for budget purposes.
City Council, Mayor Biss, Manager Stowe, Clerk Pandoza, Matt Poole, Deputy Director, Parks Recreation. Yes, the affiliate groups are aware of the potential increase. We've brought it before Parks Rec Board. They discussed it there. And then with your approval tonight, then we will make them aware of the increase. And we're bringing to you now because the groups will need to start requesting space for 2025 and September 1st. We want to make sure they're well aware of the increase for their own planning. 425 would be helped.
Okay, great. And Matt, I appreciate all your help. You've been very helpful on James Park stuff. Watching a game on Gamechanger right now. I know we're using other communities' fee structure to figure out where we should fit in. Are we also kind of looking at other communities' facility quality and seeing where we fall short relative to others? I know that's a bigger ask on a longer-term project. But as we look to other communities to guide us on what we should charge, are we also looking at the quality of facilities that we should provide?
Yeah, we are absolutely. And that's part of the reason why we have our stepped increases to help pay for some of the improvement into our field quality and our field spaces.
All right, cool. Thank you, man. I appreciate it.
Seeing no further discussion, and then here, the near disappearance of a quorum, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Suffolkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen. And Councilmember Newsma stepped out, and Councilmember Burns also stepped out.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the item is accepted and placed on file. Now on item A11. Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion?
I'd like to move item A11, approval of contract award to living habitats for a, for Civic Plaza, Theater Plaza Planning Services, RFP 2419.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of the contract just stated. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Suffolkin.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Zalazak. Sorry, sir. So as we discussed before, how much of the proposed project area does the city actually own?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, this is City Clerk and rest of the city council, Councilmember Suffolkin. I do have a slide that I could show to demonstrate, or I can just kind of just verbalize it to you. It's up to you how you like.
I leave it up to you, professional expertise.
So we'll start off, and if we need to provide an illustration, I will. So some of the property that, that is subject to this responses, the bids that we, we put out, is owned by the 909 Davis property owner. Some of it's owned by the Union Pacific Rail, which is kind of leased to Metro. And some of it is city property. The city property would be streets, sidewalks. There's a little plaza on the north, Plaza on the northwest corner of Maple and Church Street. And then the viaduct walls, the bridge walls, those would be CTA. So, you know, we do a lot of partnering with CTA on murals, same thing with Union Pacific. So there's multiple, multiple owners.
And is the owner of 909 Davis going to put in any money on this project?
He, he has committed to putting some funds into the project. We don't know what the project will be yet. I mean, the first, the first phase is, this, this, what I'm asking for tonight is a plan. So at the end of that plan, we'll have an implementation plan, and then we'll be able to go out and, and bid for the specific things that would fulfill the plan.
Okay. And how is this decision, decision made to pursue this rather than putting this money into property that we own entirely?
Sure.
Or other places, obviously, like Fountain Square, there's the parts on each side of Davis Street that are in need of different levels of funding for repairs. How did we make the decision to do this?
Okay. As an aside, we will be coming to the city council to discuss the South Plaza because there's some repairs that need to be made there as well. Just over time, there's some maintenance needs. The, what we're calling Civic Plaza in RFP 2419 came out of an idea called Theater Plaza. Theater Plaza was in, was one of the recommendations of Evanston Thrives. If you Google Evanston Thrives, you'll see a prioritized spreadsheet, which was scored by the Economic Development Committee and also the individual business districts who were impacted by the various proposals. And then those scores were kind of aggregated, averaged out. And the Theater Plaza was the third most, or the third highest scored recommendation out of 250. So that was one of the priorities we immediately proceeded to kind of fund.
Okay. And this may not be an appropriate question for you. So City Manager, if you want to jump in, if it's not, this is the first expense of many related to this. What are we going to do to ensure that the finished product doesn't fall into disrepair like we've done or allowed to have happen with other projects like this in the city?
Sure. I will, I will ask for, for assistance on that, on the back end of my answer. So on the front end of the answer is, we have the funds to implement it. Things of this nature tend to last three to five years before they really start showing wear and tear. We learned that with the Fountain Square tables. We know that with murals. So at that point, we have to make the decision of how we're going to replace them. So the idea would be either literally that the chairs are just removed, which would be a shame, or we, between now and that time, understanding that takes about three years is to have that plan in place.
Okay.
And that might be a partnership, excuse me, a partnership with the downtown organization. It could be part of the partnership with the downtown improvements that Northwestern University is participating in. It could be the building owner himself. I would like to think that the general fund would be really low on that.
Okay. So this is ARPA money, which won't come back again. So when we get to that three to five-year mark, we don't have a concrete plan for where that money would come from.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns. Ooh, sorry. Councilmember Burns.
I, I asked Paul, I think it was yesterday or the day before, if I could see some of the other bids. I think TESCA was one. I think TESCA was next up. And then there was another one. And I asked for MKSK and TESCA, and I think DMAC. He was saying it's not something that I can see, didn't, and wanted some help, I think, from Council Rugby explaining that. My thought is, if this body ultimately can, you know, decide to, like, we don't have to, if we don't have to support staff's recommendation, then as we look to making this decision, we will want to know if somebody, if staff is saying, or the panel was saying that, that living habitats, for example, was more responsive in a certain area, I would need to see the bid from MKSK, as an example, to see how responsive they were in that area to determine whether or not I wanted to support the recommendation. So I just, I don't understand how to do my job if I can't see the other bids. And I've seen them, I feel like, in other cases, but here, I'm getting a different response. So Council Rugby, maybe you can help, help me out with this.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Burns. I did reach out to the purchasing department, and they informed me that generally, we don't allow review of the bids prior to their award. It violates our purchasing policy. We can make those available to you after you vote, which I understand is not as helpful in this instance. But I think it goes towards the scoring, is my understanding.
Is that a local, that's local, or is that, is there some state provision that require us to operate in that way?
Yeah, I would defer to Tammy Nunez, who's our purchasing manager.
Who I am not.
And I would want to defer to an attorney on this, actually. So maybe this is just a question we can get. I don't know how, how I can, how we can do our job without, without seeing the bids. I can see if we like, couldn't communicate with people that were bidding on a project. That makes total sense. But we got to see the work.
I'll just.
Good afternoon. This is Tammy Nunez, purchasing manager. So during the procurement process, the city is under a code of cone of silence. So we don't make the proposals or the bids available to the general public. This is a state process that we follow. So it's part of the state procurement policy code.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? Because I, you know, and thank you, Ms. Nunez, for being online. You're not sort of seeing the body language up here, which is like a lot of like, huh, faces. So are you saying that the state law prevents release of the bids to the council members? Are you saying that the state law prevents release of the bids to the public? Are you saying that the state law allows the withholding of the bids from one or other of those bodies? What exactly does the state law impose upon us?
The state law refers to the bids and proposals not being available to the general public. So I would defer that to corporation counsel interpretation and follow that directive. There has been very limited, only one occasion, that proposals were provided to council members under a controlled environment. So they could only review the project. They couldn't copy, paste, I'm sorry, copy or forward, print. And it was a limited time that they would have access to the documents. So that, again, is an exception. It's not the policy that we follow typically to allow access to bids or proposals prior to council award.
So I guess if, if maybe this is, we can get some clarification on this moving forward. Again, there's, there's a few things that make sense to me. I get not being able to communicate with someone bidding, if that's even a thing. I get, I understand not seeing the bids prior to the close of the bidding process. That makes some sense. I just, I don't see, and I understand not providing it to the general public. They're not up here. They're not the ones that are going to be responsible for voting on it ultimately. So that makes sense as well. I could even see maybe not having a copy of it, and instead we have to view it in person. But not being able to see it at all strikes me as something that is not based on state guidance. But I'd love to get a clarification on that. So that, that's the first part. Second part is, what informed the, I see some renderings, some designs, some renderings. What, what informed what I'm looking at here? And is there an opportunity to, because I understand they had to present something in order to, to provide a proposal. But will we, will the community have an opportunity to weigh in on this now that, that, that we, we have it in, in our package to see?
Yeah, I, I definitely understand the question. That was one of the risks for this, for this firm to actually go out and design something before actually doing a community engagement process. But that's not the intent. The intent here, I mean, frankly, the RFP process that I created was a little soft around the edges. It was frustrating for some of the designers and the engineers to figure out what this was. And in some ways, it was intentional because I don't know what it needs to be. It's not going to be a $6 million fountain square where we're digging and pouring new concrete. But what is it going to be? And I wanted to leave that intentionally loose around the edges, like I said. So this particular firm, what they did is they spent a lot of time in Evanston on, over a day or two, and they did their homework. They did, they did mapping, they observed. And really what they did is they, they took a kind of, if you look at some of the, some of the influence images that they included in the document, they're just applying what we're going to see from probably any of the candidates that would be doing this project. So what we thought as a team was that if somebody's going to put that much effort into doing the research and, and trying to win this project, and also do it with two levels of funding, one, this actually ends up being the lowest cost of all of them when you divide up their tasks. There's a $40,000 kind of planning contract, and then if we want to keep them on board to implement, acquire the, the materials, it's like another $50,000. So I'm, I'm really predicting that we can, we can do this in the range of 40. And it's not that difficult of a project. We just need somebody to put a community engagement process together. And I think what that showed was what they're capable of doing, but that's not what it's going to look like at the end.
Okay. Yeah, because I had like, questions about the sales to Councilmember Suffolkin's point, you know, durability and how long are things going to last, sales, you know, that are kind of flailing in the wind.
All the, the sales, yeah.
You know, looks good, but how durable is it? How long will it last? Same thing with the paint. I'm just curious, you know, is that pavers that are, you know, colored in some way that, you know, makes it last? Or is it actual paint? And how long, you know, will that last? So there's, I just have questions about it. So I just wanted to make sure that there still would be an opportunity for the council, the, the public, you know, the businesses maybe in the area to weigh in and make modifications, perhaps.
I want, I want to be clear, the sidewalks aren't going to be painted yellow. It's, the idea here is that they're showing, like, they're using coloration to show different modes of.
No, I know. But when you look at what they're pointing to, they're pointing to street murals in, in some cases. So like on page 32, as an example.
Right. Like something like this?
Right. Yeah. And the same thing on page is 28. The yellow represents an area that will have street murals. And so I'm just wondering how that'll be.
Yeah, the, the yellow is just, is just demonstrating sidewalks. And I'm at a disadvantage because the designer wasn't able to attend tonight.
No, you, if you look at the, if you follow the line, it's just saying that all that yellow is going to be a street mural, you see? And it shows you a photo of what it may look like. We know similar street murals in other.
Sure. This is not literally, I mean, these are ideas. These are inspirations, right? And, and one of the, two disadvantages. One, the designer couldn't be at the council meeting, was, was available during committee. Two, remember, I wanted to present this to the Economic Development Committee last month, which would have given, or a couple weeks ago, which would have given us time to really dig deep on this. So the next step, if this is approved this evening, we would have them, we're not. So the next step, if this is approved this evening, we would have them, we're not executing any contracts until we go to committee on the, I think it's the 20, it's the fourth Wednesday of this month, so we can make sure we're scaling the scope in the right way and make sure they understand what we're looking for so we can make any tweaks to it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just want to quickly weigh in, and a strong agreement with Councilmember Burns, you know, you can, let's just, like, step back for a second. You know, obviously, we want a situation where when the RFP, where the proposals are evaluated by a professional team, we would expect that we would usually wind up taking that team's recommendation. In fact, that's exactly what occurs. But you also don't want this body to just be a literal formality rubber stamp. And it is sort of hard to imagine a situation where you don't get to see the proposals, what a no vote means, right? It's like, well, I haven't seen the applications, and the people who've seen them say, pick this one, and I kind of have a bad feeling about it, so I'm going to vote no. And then they're going to come back with their next choice, and I'm going to say, dang it, they were right all along, but now it's too late. Like, it's just not a, so anyway, if, if we could get a memo explaining what, what options are available and what changes would be legal, that would be great. Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like that memo to get into, under what circumstances, if any, can boards, commissions, and committees participate in the discussion or evaluation of RFPs? Because I can easily envision, in fact, I envisioned it here. You know, we would have liked to have this, the Economic Development Committee kind of have a look at this before it came to council. I can envision a scenario where we are planning a, a park renovation, and we want to get the expert and informed input from our Parks and Rec Commission as to what type of playground equipment, or should we do slides or teeter totters, that kind of thing. So I'd like that memo to, to address the BCC ability to involve themselves in the RFP process as well. Having said that, fully in supportive here, I don't want to second guess the committee. Andy Vick, who's the Executive Director of Downtown Evanston, was on the committee. I communicated with Mr. Vick earlier today, he's fully in support. So this isn't the Fourth Ward. I think it's going to help us make the most of our new location. It's something we would have done, I hope, anyway, even if the Civic Center were not moving there, because North Light Theater is going to be moving in just down the, you know, halfway down the block. So, you know, this is going to be a focal point for our community. We need to make it look good. We need to spruce it up from what it is now, and then, you know, find a way to keep it looking good well into the future, but this is the first step. So I'm in favor.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With five voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. Now on item P4, Councilmember Revel, would you care to make a motion relative to a rule suspension? Or Councilmember Newsma, I guess?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move suspension of the rules so that we can take final action on item P4 this evening.
Councilmember Newsma moves suspension of the rules so that ordinance 57-0-24 may be passed in a single vote this evening. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion has received the required unanimous vote and is passed. Now, Councilmember Newsma, do you have a motion to make?
Mr. Mayor, I will move ordinance 57-0-24, extending the time to pave the unimproved parking lot for an apartment hotel at 1555 Oak Avenue, previously authorized by ordinance 33-0-23.
Councilmember Newsma moves final passage of ordinance 57-0-24. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 57-0-24 is passed. This brings us now to item HCDC1. Councilmember Revel, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. So I move introduction of ordinance 52-0-24, amending the city's residential landlord/tenant ordinance.
Councilmember Nguyen moves introduction of ordinance 52-0-24, sorry, Councilmember Revel, I apologize, moves introduction of ordinance 52-0-24. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Oops.
Councilmember Revel?
Thank you. Yeah, just a bit of a preamble before we get into some discussion. So the, the overall goal of this amendment is to modernize and clarify the provisions of the landlord, our landlord/tenant ordinance, which was last revised in 2016. Since then, in 2021, Cook County updated their RLTO, and in that process, they identified a number of policies and solutions that benefit both tenants and housing providers and that we felt were important to incorporate in our RLTO. So the HCDC spent many hours and many meetings over, for over a year on this update. It's, the balancing act between tenants and landlords is, it's really, really tricky to achieve the right balance. I'm going to emphasize for the public, you know, that this does not include the just cause for non-renewal issue, which ACDC is going to return to discussing later this, later this month, actually. So I was prepared to offer three amendments. One was going to be on the implementation date. Obviously, we, October 1st is much too soon, and I was going to move amend, amending it to implementation date, date of January 1st, 2025. And the second amendment was, is going to be, is or was, to provide some protection for housing providers from unwarranted lawsuits, because I, I know there's a lot of concern about that in the, we have two different penalty sections in the ordinance. So the way, so one, in one of the penalty sections, we talk about if the housing provider deliberately violates the, the provision. So that, you know, so that would basically provide protection for the landlord who was, if, you know, just inadvertently making some kind of mistake in the, in the lease. And so the idea was to add that word deliberately into the section that talks about the, the time allowed for submitting, submitting the lease, the new lease to the tenant. Our rationale for asking for the housing provider to provide the new, to notify the tenant either of non-renewal or to provide the tenant with the new lease for the coming year, allowing 90 days is because the tenant, if, if the tenant is, if the land, if the housing provider is not going to be renewing the lease, then this gives the tenant a significant amount of time to, to try to find something in our very tight housing market. And if the, if the lease that's being provided for the renewal has, has a significant increase in the rent, that might also be something that, that the tenant feels, gosh, I really need to look around for something else. So that was the reason to give, to require the 90-day notice for those two points. Whether, whether 30 days is too short a time for the housing providers to hear from the, from the tenant about, yes, I will renew, I, I, you know, I think that's something we could consider, continue to discuss. You know, maybe we, if, if we moved it to 45 days, that would, because at 45 days, that gives the tenant 45 days from the time that landlord provides the notice of, let's say, a rent increase, which is still a pretty tight timeline for the, for the tenant to decide that they can't afford it and they need to find something else. So it's, it's, as I say, it's a, it's a really big balancing act, and I, have we got it right? I, I certainly don't want to pretend I know for, for certain that we have. So I guess I would like to hear from my colleagues on the council, where, where they think we need to fine tune something further. I have to say, I would, I would like to not send it back to HCDC. HCDC is already way behind in, in all of its agenda items, because we've been spending so much time on this already. So I would, I would like to think that this body here could, in its infinite wisdom, decide how, how they want to proceed.
Okay, and just to be clear, you previewed but did not yet make any motions relative to a couple amendments, correct? Councilmember, oh, will the clerk please add Councilmember Hadekatis to the roll? Councilmember Newsma, followed by Hadekatis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilmember Revel, I think, has acknowledged, this is the first time this issue is coming to the full council, so the first time a number of us have been able to officially weigh in here. And so I, you know, want to start off by acknowledging what I think even a number of the landlords are saying is that the overall intent and objective of this ordinance is something that, that we all can get behind, you know, to make life as easy as possible for Evanston, Evanston tenants, and also Evanston landlords. There's a lot here that I'm fully on board with. There's some stuff that I could live with and, and one or two things that I can't get behind at this point. So running through Councilmember Revel's proposed motions, moving the start date to January 1st, that makes sense. I think we can maybe come to some reasonable accommodation on the renewal period for the reasons you've suggested. Then the third point was the, the penalty clause, and that is the one that has given me the most pause here. And, you know, what I'm concerned about is, you know, a, a good theoretical idea, having some, you know, perhaps negative unintended consequences. And there are a number of small landlords in town. In fact, most of the landlords in town, at least by number of buildings, are small landlords, you know, six units or less. Mom and pops who don't have a staff, don't have a back office, and I am really reluctant to impose a penalty of two months' rent and, in some cases, a $500 fine if they are one day late in emailing a renewal notice, which is still three months in advance. Might be a different scenario for a, you know, a fully professional big building where they've got a staff and, you know, they can hold their staff accountable for that, but for, you know, for a small-time landlord, and full disclosure, I am one, you know, my wife and I still own the condo in Chicago that she bought before I even started dating her. So just sharing my, that in full disclosure with everybody, but I would not be able to support this with the penalties as they are now, unless somebody can really try and convince me and a number of other community stakeholders otherwise. I'm coming to this conclusion based on a number of conversations I've had with landlords in the Fourth Ward, as well as with the, the tenant advocacy organizations. Thanks, that's all for now.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Well, excuse my shortness of breath. I just rode my bike straight from work, so this is probably like hour 12 of being on the clock in some way, but I really wanted to be here because I think this is really important. You know, the committee and has been working on this for over a year, and we've had really careful consideration about how to balance this. A lot, and I'll just speak on a couple of things. The, the fair notice portion, this is something I made a referral for before we started this process, and we held off on making it separately because we thought it made more sense to include in the process. Housing providers have always had 30 days to find a tenant. That's not changing. The dynamic that I know from the past personally, and what I've heard from a lot of people is, that's gotten 10 times worse, is that it is really hard to find an apartment in 30 days. And so, you know, we debated this. I think, you know, the Chicago fair notice had a lot more moving parts, which we scaled back. At first, many of the same people who are here to advocate for themselves really did not like the, the different measures for how long you've been in an apartment. And at some point during our committee meetings, it seemed like folks were fine with, well, 90 days is okay, just across the board. Now, I get that they would like more time because they're wanting a give and take here, but I think it's really important that we keep that 90 days for tenants, because we really need to stabilize the housing market for folks in Evanston, and that's something I think we really need to keep as is.
Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. I, I just want to echo what Councilmember Hadekatis said, which that the HCDC committee, the Housing and Community Development Committee, has spent a year working on this. We've been very meticulous about this. We've had maybe too many meetings about this and taken too long on this, which is part of why we're so behind on our schedule there. And so I, I think that, and, and it's a committee that has housing providers on it, that has a mix of folks, some, some various backgrounds. I think the product here is a really good product. I do want to get clarification. So Councilmember Newsma, one, I'm, I'm fine with the amendment that Councilmember Revel has highlighted or previewed, which is moving the implementation back to January 1st. I mean, it's not ideal, but it's not the end of the world to do that. But I do want to get clarification. Councilmember Newsma mentioned a penalty for housing providers if they're one day late with the renewal notice. Can someone help me figure out where that language is in the ordinance?
I think it's section 5-3-6-5-5D.
And, and, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, the mic was not.
Page 296 in the packet.
Oh, sorry, yeah, thanks.
Okay, and can you help me understand the language that says that if someone's one day late, that they would have a two-month penalty?
Well, the, the provision says that the house, if the housing provider violates this subsection, so it's open, pretty open-ended, and so the concern is that even a minor misstep could then, you know, unscrupulous lawyers could take advantage of that and, and go after the.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Newsma, can you say that page number again?
It's on page 296 of 330 of the City Council Packet, which is page 20 of the ordinance, or page 22 of 33 of this particular agenda item. In the ordinance language, it's section 5365, which consists of four paragraphs, A through C enumerate the, the notification periods, 90 days or 30 days for the landlord or the tenant. Section D is the, is the penalty clause.
Yeah, but where in it, I, I think your reading of it is wrong, because it, it's not saying that there is no, the 90-day period starts when the housing provider notifies the tenant. And so let's say, you know, someone's 88 days out from their, the end of their lease, then the housing provider just gives them the 90-day notice at that point. The violation would be giving someone less than 90 days. Nowhere in here do I see that, you know, that there's some tight 90-day window that is tied to the lease. No, you just have to give a 90-day notice.
The, the, an example of a scenario I'm visioning is, is in the case An example of a scenario I'm visioning is in the case that, let's say, the lease runs from January 1st to December 1st. And if I'm the landlord, and I want to increase the rent or I don't want to rent this apartment out to this tenant or to anybody anymore, I have to let them know later than 90 days. If I let them know on 89 days or the 88th day or the 70th day, I would be in noncompliance with this ordinance and then would be subject to two-month rent penalty and $500.
Yeah, Councilmember Nusma, I think where you're reading is wrong is that it, it doesn't matter when the lease ends, you just have to give the person, the housing provider would have to give the person a 98th-day notice. So whether the lease ended December 1st or, you know, whenever, as long as you give them 90 days before you are to, you know, obviously if the lease is December 1st, you have to give them at least 90 days there, but it's not tethered to the end of the lease, it's just tethered to the 90 days. So even if the lease ends December 1st and you, you know, let's say you send them out the notice, you know, 88 days before, or you send them a notice 88 days before, that's when the 90-day window starts. So you'd have to essentially extend their lease by two days, but there's no penalty as long as you give them a 90-day notice, the penalty would not apply here.
That's, that's not how I read it.
Well, it's not how it was written.
Well, can someone, can the law department, I mean, Councilruggie?
So, just hold on, Councilmember Reed, so you probably can't tell, if we can have quiet in the chamber so that the discussion can move forward in a...
I know, the housing providers love to...
Councilmember, I'll do my best to keep them under control. I think, I'll do my best, but I would like, I would ask for quiet in the chamber because it has been a little bit difficult for this discussion to go on over that. So the floor belongs to Councilmember Reed, who has a minute 50 seconds left. So I'll restart the clock, Councilmember, and you can direct a question to the Corporation Council, for instance, if that's your desire.
If I may not use my time, I've already said the question. If I can just repeat the question without it counting against my time.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed.
If council needs me to. Thank you.
Thanks. It would be my instinct from a legal standpoint that if there's confusion at all, there needs to be clarity in this provision. So my recommendation from the get-go would be that we clarify to make this abundantly clear, and however, you know, I'm open to suggestions on that, and that's part of this process, is that it helps and other people read it, not just lawyers, so that we can make sure it's clear to everyone. I think at this point, I think the inference that it could apply if you're one day late is appropriate, so I think it would, my suggestion would be that we clarify.
If I may interject, one day late from what?
Giving that 30-day notice or giving the 90-day notice, sorry.
But what triggers being late? Where in the ordinance does it say that you're late? It just says you have to give them a 90-day notice.
I guess if you give them 88 days notice, you would be late.
Well, not late, you would be violating the ordinance by not giving them 90 days. There's no late or early or whatever it is, it's just you have to give them 90 days before you terminate the lease or make any changes.
Correct.
I mean, if I, against all of my better judgment, I'm going to wade in here and just make an effort to do a little bit of translating here. So we'll go back to Councilmember Nusma's situation, except we'll make it more familiar to those of us who last rented when they were academics, and assume that the lease is up May 31st. And so, the intent of the housing provider is to not renew the lease and look elsewhere and try to enter an agreement with somebody else, and oops, we blew the 90-day deadline and now we're less than 90 days from May 31st. I think what Councilmember Reed is saying is they can then just terminate the arrangement as of June 10th and then be in compliance with the 90-day clock, and I think the concern is that that's perhaps not a practical way to manage things. Is that, Councilmember Nusma, am I kind of characterizing your point of view? Okay. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I've needed a number of translators today, and I appreciate it. Yeah, and so I think, what I actually sensed from Councilmember Nusma's comments earlier was that this seemed to be something where we wanted to move to eliminate this requirement for small housing providers. That's the direction that I inferred from his statements. And so, I just want to clarify that this 90-day rule just says, hey, you have to give the person 90 days, and I don't think this is too onerous for anyone. I mean, if you're choosing to provide housing for people and you're choosing to invest your money in a way to gain profit from providing housing, there are regulations that you need to follow, and giving people fair notice is one. And I think 90 days is fair, the committee discussed this. I think if we need to clarify, it's really just adding a word, or a few words, just clarifying that the 90-day window begins whenever the, you know, the notice is given, and as long as a 90-day period from the time the notice is given to the time that any changes are made occurs in accordance with the lease, then we're good. And so there isn't a late period, it's just, you know, if you, there's no late being late on this, it's just either doing it or not doing it, is what I wanted to clarify. So I'll reserve my probably 10 seconds.
Actually, zero seconds, so we move on with Councilmember...
This is a big topic, if I can just say...
We move on with Councilmember Winn followed by Kelly.
And if we can suspend the rules on time here, this is a big topic that the committee's been discussing for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have concerns about this penalty provision, and actually, if you read 5-3-6-5, Section A, it reads, "If the rental agreement will not be renewed or if a month-to-month tenancy will be terminated, the housing provider shall provide written notice of the nonrenewal to the tenant no less than 90 days prior to the termination date." Now, if you didn't have, if you didn't have prior to the termination date, Councilmember Reed, I think that your interpretation would be correct, but termination date is, I believe it's a legally defined term here, or it should be in any lease. And so, there is where a landlord could get tripped up, and then, then you go down to Subsection D, and if the housing provider violates this subsection, "The tenant shall recover two months' rent or actual damages, whichever is greater, and the housing provider shall be fined no less than $500 by the City of Evanston." That's not softened in any way for the difference between providing someone one day late or three, two and a half months late, and that's what my concern is here. You know, we had heard that, I've learned that 26% of our housing providers here in Evanston are owner-occupied. That's a heavy penalty to fall on someone for making what is really almost a harmless error, and so I'm not comfortable with the penalty provisions as they're stated here at this point. I real, I need to, I think these need to be modified in some way to create a better balance. I recognize that there are sometimes where there are bad landlords who would, who need some incentive to make them follow the rules correctly, but bringing down the hammer for something that can be something that's just a minor mistake, I think is not appropriate. That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Kelly followed by Burns.
Thank you. Yeah, I also have concerns about that. Section 5365 here, it does seem extreme, you know, that if you were to make an error on this even by accident, that you would be then penalized to have to provide two months of free rent. I also do question the 90, you know, the lack of parity, I'm not seeing us to be exact, but just such extreme parity of 90 days versus 30 days. I think Chicago is 60 days, right? The amount of notice that a, it isn't one?
Chicago's over 100 and some days if you've lived in the unit for over three years, so Chicago's actually goes much further than this.
Okay, it's not a 60-days notice, sorry. I take that, I stand corrected. But I think the 90-days versus 30, is it, you know, I would like to see that come into a little more alignment. I am concerned also that there's no sort of distinction for local landlords. I think we all know, the jury's in, that local landlords are more connected to their community, they're connected to their tenants, that it's all treated the same, whether it's, you know, Gray Star or a local landlord that, you know, maintains a high quality of living for their residents. So, those are a couple of my concerns for the moment, and thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
Councilruggie, I just want a little help with this. So if an error is made by a housing provider, it seems like B corrects it, right? You know, you know, we could have a penalty on top of that, but B just says, hey, if a mistake is made, they just get 90 days from that point, unless I'm not understanding that correctly, so...
That is what B says, you're correct.
Because they just, you know, renters just want the time back, you know? If you didn't give me the time, just give me the time now, which is somewhat what Councilmember Reed was explaining, just in a different way, but as long as that, as long as I'm understanding B right, I'm fine with, you know, if we're not comfortable with the penalty or we want to reduce it, I'm personally fine with that if B corrects it, because I know renters just want the time, right? So if you didn't, if you were 10 days late from giving me the notice, I mean, I'm sure some may want to also bring, you know, the lawsuit or a complaint to the circuit courts, but for the most part, they just want the time. And so, again, as long as I'm understanding that correctly, I'm fine if we want to reduce it, waive it, I mean, we can have that conversation or remove it. In terms of the 90 days versus 30 days, we've all seen that same, like, graphic that explains what equity is, where there's the height differences, and so people have the different box heights, you know, to be able to see over the fence, and so, unless you disagree with that, at some point, I just want us to adopt this new way, not new way, but this way of understanding what equity means, what fairness and justice means, because we come in and we're like, we want equality, but we're past that. We were at equality when I was growing up, that was all the rave, and now it's not. There's, we're talking about equity now, which is what each group needs, reasonably needs to achieve whatever outcome they're trying to achieve, and so, what's been described here is that we know for sure, like, we have the data that tells us it takes at least three months in most cases for a renter to find another unit in Evanston. And we know, I think, from Councilmember Herakrates, what he said is, is that the current time that a tenant has to express to a housing provider that they're not interested in renewing the lease is 30 days, so we understand also that that's reasonable because it's the status quo, unless it's not, that that's something that's not the case. Okay, so what is it now? And if you want to come to the microphone, that's fine. And also, if it's not reasonable, if you can explain why 30 days is not reasonable and you need, you know, need more time.
Sure. Thank you. There is no date at which the response from the tenant is required or limited at this point, and correct me if I'm wrong with that. So, the way it works in practicality, and in support of your statement about how long it takes to find an apartment, part of what this is going to do is reduce the availability of apartments. So, right now, typically, we have apartments go on the market 60 days before the lease expires. By having us have to wait till there's only 30 days left, that condenses that ability for those people who are looking for apartments to find something more than 30 days in advance. So you're, that's what I'm getting by the unintended consequence, is that you're now prohibiting the prospective tenant from finding an apartment that they want to find for 90 days out because I only have the ability to offer it to you until it's 30 days out, because I'm still waiting to hear from the tenant whether they're going to renew. So, given the 90-days notice of the renewal, I don't think there's a problem anybody has with that. The problem is, by having to wait 60 days to get an answer, I'm now precluded from putting that apartment on the market until there's only 30 days left to go, which means all these people who are looking for apartments can only look for an apartment in the last 30 days. So they are being short-changed 30 days of trying to find an apartment. So that's why the suggestion, I think, was make the date at which the resident has to respond 60 days before the lease expires, so there's a reasonable time to market that apartment, so that the people who are looking have the ability to look for something more than just 30 days before, because if you work for a living and you have 30 days to find an apartment, that means you're limited to the weekends, right? So now, our landlords showing on Sundays, a lot of them do not. So you have four potential days to find an apartment, get approved for an apartment, make your arrangements to move and move. So you're really cutting down what the prospective tenant can do to find a new apartment. That's why we're, that's the biggest issue with the 30-day notice. It's really more of an equity-for-everybody arrangement, because as you condense that timeframe, demand goes up for that timeframe, rents go up for that timeframe. So your unintended consequence is hurting the prospective tenants is what it really comes down to.
Appreciate that, and I appreciate you framing it in that way. Dominic, I see him in the outer chambers, or whatever we call that, I don't know if you would mind speaking to this issue. Dominic is from Open Communities Fair Housing Organization.
I apologize, Councilmember, what was the particular question?
Just, we're discussing the 30 days, a tenant would have 30 days to express to a housing provider that they're not interested in renewing their lease.
Right.
We're being asked to extend that to 60 days. So, again, 90 days, I think there's not much concern about the 90 days that housing providers would have to let the tenant know they're not renewing, but you say 30 to 60.
Right. What I'll say, just to be real brief about this, is actually, we've had several conversations about this among advocates, organizations like ours, Law Center for Better Housing, Metropolitan Tenants Organization. I can tell you right now that this is not the hill that advocates want to die on. I think if it'd make landlords' lives a lot easier to have that 60-day requirement, I think that would not, you know, be something that we, I think there's a gray area here, and I think that you can turn over units pretty quickly, I think, in this rental market. I know some landlords might, you know, it's lost income if you don't have somebody in there, I understand that. You know, as Councilmember Herakrates is pointing out, it's a pretty tight market and units fill up pretty quick. That being said, I think, you know, and I share this notion with our CEO, Cheryl Lawrence, she's actually spoken to me about this at length, that she thinks that this might need to be a point of concession, so I'll just state that, just from sort of an advocacy point of view.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, hearing that, it, you know, if the advocates and fair housing organizations are comfortable with 60, I think that's worth considering.
I can at least speak for, you know, a few people on that. I can't speak for the advocacy community at large, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing is, for me, is that renters for sure need more time, and...
The 90 days is what's important to us.
And but there's also situations where, you know, you may have to, I see this coming up the most when you're going to increase the rents. And so, somebody is, they really can't afford to stay necessarily, but they're trying to hold on because maybe they have children especially, like, I have children in the district, you're raising the rents, I can't really afford it, but if I can't find anything better, then I'll need to stay.
Right.
And so I'm just trying to, like, I got one foot out, one foot in, and I just need time to do apartment searches and, you know, when I have children, work as you described, but still have enough time to, like, to stay put if I need to for another year so I can find something, something else. And so I think this is, you know, trying to strike that right balance. I don't know if there will be, if there will be any concern about even going, you know, closer to what Chicago is for the tenants, if we give landlords 60 days. A lot of the landlords that I've talked to, it seems like you're already giving a lot of notice, certainly 90 days, you know, so is there any, you know, what if we allow more time for the tenant, more time than 90 days, and then 60, you know, for the housing providers?
Yeah, I mean, to answer...
Please use the microphone.
Sorry. To answer your scenario, when you have been given a notice that your rent is going up whatever percent, right, and now you're trying to figure out, how am I going to decide whether I'm going to stay, whether I'm going to go? Well, if you can't even decide about what's available till there's only 30 days left before your lease expires, how can you make that decision even? That's, so this is a benefit to the tenant as well, to give them a broader window to look at possibilities for other housing, rather than they have to be constricted to that last 30 days. So that's where, to give them a notice of the increase, 90 days ahead, no problem, but to have to wait until there's only 30 days left...
I don't know how that restricts it, because they could tell you sooner. This is just saying that that's the, they have to tell you.
But the way the ordinance is written, it says, we are precluded from requesting a response sooner than 30 days, correct?
No, I know, but it's not, it's not restricting the tenant.
You're right. You're right.
As to when they can notify you on their own, which is.
They're communicating with each other, and this is an exception.
That's right. So if, if.
Just let me, so I have two items of air traffic control. Number one, your time has expired, so please bring this to a conclusion. Number two, this is a great conversation, actually very helpful, I would say, but I want to make sure that it's all happening into a microphone, both for the benefit of all of us in the room and also for anyone who might be watching at home now or later.
The last thing I'll say is, is again, it doesn't, it does, this doesn't stop somebody from going to a landlord and saying, hey, you know, I don't plan to notify. I just know we need to give as much time for tenants to consider whether or not they're staying or going. And that's, that's the difficult part, which is why I suggested if we can go up a little bit on the 90 to go up on the 60.
Oh, yeah.
If there's some support for that, I would, it would certainly make me feel more comfortable with those types of adjustments.
We do 120 days.
And that's what I mean. And that's what I keep hearing time and time again, where it's like, you're already doing this. So can we go up? Just, you know, let's stop fighting about this. We do 120, right? And then do 60. And that, that makes me feel a lot better about supporting this.
I think that that would be something that everybody could get behind.
Okay, thank you.
That's my impression.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time. Councilmember Ravel has 15 seconds left.
Well, the, the idea, 120 days versus, we're all over the map here. Yeah. So I guess, question number one is, if eliminating the phrase "to the termination date" from A, and I guess from C, does that alleviate the concerns about the penalty?
I guess, who are you asking that question?
What?
Who is that directed to?
Councilmember Newsma.
I'll say yes.
Or, or maybe our Corporation Council. And then, for me, I think the main thing is that we give the tenants ample time to find, to find another place to live if they can't afford to stay in this apartment, because the rent's being raised or the landlord is not renewing the lease. So 60 to 120, I mean, I.
So Councilmember, do you want to weigh in?
To your question about, about the penalty, I'm not sure we have, are yet at the point where the language is clear. Assuming we can get there, I think I would still have some really serious concerns about the magnitude of the penalty. Two months' rent, you know, $500 for a small landlord.
Right. Yeah, no, I, I think I'd be open to reducing that penalty significantly.
Councilmember, your time has expired, but you had, you had telegraphed some amendments. Do you want to?
Well, I, I mean, I, I think, I think I'm not clear on what the amendment should be at this point, based on this discussion. So I guess I would be amenable to our tabling this to the first meeting in July, to allow us time to, I guess, consult with Corporation Council and see if we can come up with something that's legally going to work for us and addresses the concerns we've heard tonight.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Ravel moves that this item be tabled to the first meeting in July, which I'm not going to do the way that it's in my head, but it's the second Monday of July. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll on the motion to table?
One second.
Winn, second.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. This item has been, will be, has been, is tabled, sorry, this item is tabled to the first July meeting, which is July 8, 2024. I do want to just reiterate what I said. I thought there was really good back and forth here, and I think an opportunity for that to be continued between now and July 8. And I hope that that can, that can happen, and we can arrive at this, at that next meeting with the fruits of those, of those efforts. Now on item FB1, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 43-0-24. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and ordinance 43-0-24 is passed. Now on item AP1, would someone care to make a motion relative to rule suspension?
Mr. Mayor, I move suspension of the rules to consider action this evening on item AP1.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves suspension of Rule 5.1 to allow reappointment of certain members this evening. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. Rule 5.1 is suspended. And now is there a motion relative to item AP1?
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
I move approval of appointments to Board's commissions and committees. Second.
Councilmember Winn moves approval of item AP1. This, just for transparency, it's four reappointments, three to the Reparations Committee, Claire McFarland Barber, Rob Andrew Simmons, and Carlos Sutton, and one to the Preservation Commission, that's Sarah Dreller. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sufferton stepped out. Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the reappointments are approved. Now, this brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Sufferton, Councilmember Ravel?
Just to encourage Seventh Ward residents to come to a ward meeting a week from tonight in the parasol room, June 17.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes, just want to give a reminder about the monthly eighth ward meeting, which will be the last day of this month, as it is every month. We'll be at, I believe, Robert Crown. I'll give updates as to whether we're at Levy or Robert Crown as we, as the date approaches. I, I just briefly want to say, I, on a whole host of issues, but, you know, I think ranked choice voting really exemplifies it. I really implore my colleagues, implore the council, implore anyone who is serving in a legislative role to, if you don't understand something or you don't know something, take the time to figure it out. This city is going to, this is, if, we are going to be in a situation in a few months where ranked choice voting is not going to be implemented here in Evanston. I've said it from the beginning. I think this is an example, this will be, one of the big, biggest examples of a failure on all of us. And, and this is just one example that's going to be blatant because a court or the county clerk's office is going to tell us as much. But this is indicative of how this council and many councils across this nation operate. We have someone who has some expertise on, on this, a former local election official, screaming from the mountaintops from the beginning that we're doing it wrong. No one's heeding that advice. No one's even taking pause. And it's going to be disruptive to our elections. It's going to cause confusion. And it's going to be completely our fault because we ignore when people are raising clear issues. And so I truly, on that issue, on the RLTO, on a whole host of issues, I implore folks to take a breath, to really try to understand things before you vote on them. That's it.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Harris?
Hello. Couple of things to report. I just got back from the ITGA, the International Town Gauntlet Association meeting, with a few city workers, some residents, and it was a really good opportunity for us to meet with other institutions and how they work through problems, or not even problems, just work through situations with the town and the institution. And we will bring back that information in a month or so. Our residents, this is the first time our residents attended, and they had a really good time. So I was excited about that. I attended Music for Peace, held by some high school students, some young high school women, and hope to bring them here to do maybe a small something. Next ward meeting will be Thursday, the 27th, at Robert Crown, and I'll get more information. And then I hope everybody comes out to Juneteenth. Thank you.
Councilmember Winn?
Yes, my office hours will be this week, Thursday, June 13, from 7:30 to 9:30 at Brothers K.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The July meeting of the Fourth Ward will be Tuesday, July 2nd, 7:00 PM at Robert Crown. No office hours in July and no ward meeting in August. We will be convening at some point at a neighborhood meeting to talk about a proposed development in the Main Street area. Details TBD.
Councilmember Burns?
There's at least one person who's still online that brought up whether or not fines and inspections were done on the Wesley properties. You try to slip this in, I'm going to catch it every time. And we've said this time and time again. It's in statements that we've released. It's on the FAQ document. We've created a page just for, just so you can get answers to your questions about the properties on Wesley and the tenants involved. There was inspections. There were violations. Fines don't come until after the violations, right? You get a, you get an inspection, the violations are noticed, and then if, and then you get a, you get a reinspection date. At the reinspection date, if you don't make the repairs, then it goes to our, through our administrative hearing process. Once you go to the administrative hearing process, that's when it's determined whether or not you get fined or not. We didn't get to that point because the last inspection that was done on the properties, the violations were corrected that same summer. I believe if my memory serves me, the violations were provided early summer and they were corrected by the end of the summer. So again, I know there's this attempt, this campaign to try to, without even providing any evidence or documentation, to act as though the city has made an error here. If you have such evidence, please provide it. But I have not seen it. What I have seen is inspection reports that show that violations were, were given out and they were corrected. And by the time we were scheduled to re-inspect, that's when the property owner had reached out and we started to work with them immediately to understand the buildings, all three of the buildings' condition. So just wanted to provide that information. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma?
Mr. Mayor, let me bring this up. Here we go. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding workers' compensation and minutes review. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2C, Sections 12 and 21.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves that the City Council convene itself into an executive session to discuss the two items just enumerated. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. And at 8:33 PM, the City Council convenes into an executive session to begin in the City, in the Council Library immediately.